Okay, it's seven o'clock. Shall we call the meeting to order?
Yes.
Does anyone, would anyone like to remove any of the, any of the items from the consent agenda?
Not I.
No, thank you.
New system is wonderful.
Nope.
Okay, great. So much to approve the order of items then for the regular agenda?
So, second? No, no, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass on the, the, uh, next item, President's Report, short one. I know we're gonna talk about the, our affiliate libraries Detroit and Cranbrook and Troy. I had no idea we can do nineteen hundred passes to Cranbrook, which is, that's a fantastic number. So I just want a little notation of appreciation for that relationship. And then I also asked Tara to talk a little bit more about our subscription-based services. We all kind of, I think our, understand our book policy, you know, which books do we buy, which do we don't. I at least don't understand which subscriptions we're doing and why and how we did generate value, so we're gonna talk a little more about that. And with that, I turn it over to Tara.
Alright, thank you. Um, well, before we get to that, I have several updates to share with you. Probably the biggest project on our horizon this year is our building project, our library, uh, design project. And it is, um, you know, taking off, it's like going down the runway right now, I feel like. As you know, as you remember, a couple of weeks ago in early April, the C two eighteen presented the block floor plan to you all and to the department heads. And they took our feedback, which was positive and in support of most of the ideas that were included. And they've been, um, working on, uh, pushing this plan forward. They've closed the first phase of design, which is called conceptual design, and we're moving into schematic design, which as they say is the fun part where we get to look at furniture and colors and finishes, yeah. So, um, we have blocked out next Thursday and the library design team is gonna go on a field trip to visit a bunch of furniture showrooms. So that is, did you want to join?
I don't know.
The library design team is me, Catherine, Lauren, Katoni Ellis from Youth Services, and Brooke Hoskins from Adult and Teen, and Joy representing the trustees. We're planning to visit, I think, three or four furniture dealers.
I think it's three with lunch at one of them, so it's, it's like four stops. Three places.
Is that a week from this Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And Chloe and Jenna explained to us how these furniture dealer works. They're, they're, they're kind of like a car dealer where they sell certain lines out of their showroom. They talked about the different ways we can purchase furniture, so there's a lot to be explored when it comes to furniture. Our plan is to, once we make some selections, and when I say make some selections, it's very preliminary stages, we're just picking kind of like, yeah, we want pods, or we want soft chairs with arms, it's very loose at this point. We will have a furniture fair where some of the items will come to the library. It won't be the finishes that we thought they would, that we want, they might be like magenta or polka dotted or something. And we will have them out on the floor and have patrons be able to sit in them and test them and provide feedback. So that's all coming in the next months. I anticipate that by the June twelfth Building and Grounds Committee meeting, we'll be able to talk a little bit more in detail about furniture, so please put that on your calendars for the time.
Um, I have a quick question. When your group goes, are you going to be discussing prices as well? Because I, you know, if you fall in love with a chair and we need to get fifty of them and each one is ten thousand dollars.
Yep, we are gonna talk about that. They said that, um, if that happens, if we fall in love with like the one that's twenty-five thousand dollars, there are other versions, there's like a good, better, best.
Okay.
And so they'll be able to work with us on that.
But are they working with, um, for instance, are they saying if there's a lot of chairs that we should stay within this framework that would make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Cause I know they have a budget as well because we're, that's what we planned for them. Okay, gotcha.
My understanding is that they've spoken to each of these. They're funneling us in the right direction, you know, to narrow down all the dealers.
Okay.
But then they're also probably saying to the dealers, this is what we're looking for, so don't be showing us that.
Okay.
Be showing us this. And we'll still have a, probably a huge selection.
Sure.
But the other thing that I, that they shared with us is that they have national contracts. A lot of these companies, um, so that we're able to work within a discounted program. And they know which ones are discounted more than others.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you, been a clear.
So there's more to come on that.
Okay, thank you.
A lot, yeah, a lot more to come.
I wanted to provide just a quick update that we once again hosted the AARP Tax Aid Day, which is when volunteers from AARP come in and prepare people's taxes. We held that on two days, and over those two days, they helped thirty-one taxpayers file their, um, two thousand twenty-four returns. So I think that's a great service that we can provide to the community. Um, Catherine couldn't be with us today, she has to staff the desk due to a staff shortage. But I was going to ask her to talk about her attendance at Michigan, um, Library Advocacy Day, which happened April thirtieth. So she provided a little report for me and I wanna share that with you. Cause I think it's great that she participated in this day and right now we need a lot of advocacy at the state level and the national level. But it was in Lansing on Wednesday, April thirtieth, there were about a hundred library workers in attendance. MLA had scheduled visits with library, uh, with state legislators in advance. And they seemed to pick legislators that were, um, representing the districts that the, that library workers lived in. So Catherine visited Veronica Hayes of the tenth House District, and the chief of staff was Senator Paul Rogino, I don't think I pronounced that right, of the tenth Senate District. So those are her representatives where she lives in votes. And the big goal of the day was to secure funding in the state of Michigan's budget for twenty twenty-six, to replace the funding that's been lost from IMLS, uh, the grant not being, uh, going through, to pay for Melcat. So they're asking the state to fill that bowl of six point seven four million dollars.
And that's Michigan's.
Yeah. So she said it was great, she had great conversations. The two people she talked to were big library supporters, so it was very friendly collegial conversation. In between meetings with legislators, they listened to a lot of speakers and library leaders. They also got to visit a bunch of bookmobiles that were parked on the Capitol lawn, and they got a tour of the Capitol as well. So it was really nice.
Did she say that there were a lot of local, um, librarians there? I was thinking Franklin, cause it's so small, or Birmingham, were they there, Troy?
You know, I don't know where everybody was from, but there were about a hundred from across the state. Um, for those of you who were at the Ambassador's Meeting, you might remember that we talked about generative AI within, um, Hoopla and how this is kind of a plague upon libraries. If, if you're not familiar, there's a lot of generative AI content that gets ingested into Hoopla. And patrons might unknowingly check out a summary of a book, thinking that it's the book, because this content is kind of, um, just, um, disguised. We get charged for that, the patron doesn't know what they want.
There was an article in the New York Times about that recently.
Yeah, there was one in CMG, the Eagle Newspaper, which Joan read, and Joan is the one who asked me to talk about this at the Ambassador's Meeting. So, um, we talked about that and Laura Berg mentioned that her friend is, just started working at Midwest Tape and, um,
That owns Hoopla.
Yes, which owns Hoopla, thank you. And so she secured a meeting with one of their account representatives. And Laura Crowley and I met with, uh, this gentleman and told him our concerns, um, which I'm sure he's heard from many other libraries. Um, and he mentioned some things that they are doing differently to hold publishers' feet to the fire, to have better content, um, ingested and not just all this AI schlock.
Why don't they just simply agree not to charge us if somebody, if somebody checks out one of these things?
Well, it'd just be better if it wasn't there in the first place.
I know, I agree with you, but in the meantime, hey, we won't charge you.
Or maybe issue permits or something.
But they may not be, they're probably not willing to do that, though.
Yeah. They also mentioned that there are some ways that we as the librarians can filter that content. We can bump it back to them and say, hey, we don't like this. We don't really like, that's at least something we can do in the meantime, but that's work that we're doing. Whereas we're paying them a lot of money for their content, so. To be continued, he made a lot of great noises about, oh, we're taking this very seriously, we're really working on this.
They, they chose the representative to have us speak with quite well. He was very personable, he had a, you know, a lot of things, you know, things. I don't think he was insincere.
Right.
You know, um, but, yeah, um, I will be very interested to see what concrete actions, you know, come from this. Cause like Tara says, he, oh, well, you can give this email out, patrons can do it, you can do it. Well, that's not really the point. I'm giving you the money, so you're providing the service. I don't need to be working for you as well as, you know.
And as you all saw, in the, in the cashes for this month, we're giving them a lot of money.
Yep, and the demand keeps rising.
Coincidentally, my neighbor asked me about it.
Really?
Because she has
Uses Hoopla?
Used, um, requested a summary by mistake.
Uh-huh.
Right.
It's happened to me once, and now I'm a lot smarter, now that I understand that it's there, yeah.
I think that's the issue is that.
But why does the, why does the consumer have to be on guard?
Right, right, sorry.
Now, it's like these nonsense phone calls you get all the time.
Right.
You know, we have to be on guard, you know.
Is there a way to make the filter sticky so that you can have them be default for the public?
There are some ways to turn the content off and filter it, but, um, you know, again.
It's very imperfect, and we would know.
Yeah, you know, I don't wanna get too far in the words of it, but
No. We need to ask for all of that to be excluded, but, you know.
I wanted you to know that that conversation happened and that they did listen to us and hopefully some things will change with Hoopla. Also along the lines of technology, um, IT turned on a new email filter security system this week. It's called Checkpoint Harmony Email, or as Joe, uh, Paul likes to call it, uh, eHarmony. It does a lot of work behind the scenes to filter our email and make sure that it's safe for us. It's gonna filter, um, attachments and it gives you a little warning like, hey, this looks like it's an invoice. Make sure everything looks legit before you click on any links or open it. So, you know, email is our weakest point in our IT technology chain because it relies on imperfect, um, users using it, so we're happy to have this new, um, system in place. And then, yeah, Shane asked me to talk about subscription services. So your questions were about Sky River and about, um, the periodicals, is that what she wanted to talk about?
I was, I just saw it, it's on page five there, so you've got the, uh, Sky River for twenty-five and then you've got Midwest Tape for fifty.
Yeah, so Sky River is what's called a bibliographic utility database. It's a big database of catalog records that the tech, technical services librarians use to build up our catalog. So when we get new books in the library, we have to look up the bib record, which has the title, the author, the publication date, all the information about the book. We ingest that into our catalog, so we get all of that from Sky River. It's a very, very specific database that only library workers use.
So it's not customer费?
And we only pay it that one time a year, so that's why that line goes way up at the very beginning of the year. We get that from O C S. Um, and then the subscriptions, uh, the periodical subscription service, we pay one company, uh, a sum to subscribe to all of the magazines and newspapers that we possibly can. They don't do all of them, but they do most of them for us, so that's why that was a big one.
We reviewed it, what is it, we, we put out a, um,
Every three years.
Every three years, that's what I thought.
So how do we pay, uh, Hoopla and Libby?
Yeah, so Hoopla, we pay, um, a couple of times a year, we pay a big deposit fee. So we pay, we have, I think it was ninety thousand dollars budgeted for that. Sixty comes from Adult and Teen, thirty-four comes from Youth Services. We pay, I think we just paid, was it fifty or sixty thousand on the cashes for this month? And then we pay another chunk later in the year. Uh, and then patrons use items in Libby and it just, it's kind of like it's ticked away, it's a deposit.
So it's a, it's a pay per customer use fee? And is the fee variable, is it ninety cents per order?
Does it roll over?
It's variable.
And if it's not depleted, it rolls over to the next year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. And Libby, we buy, it's more like print books, we purchase each one individually. And we have, um, complete control over what we purchase there. Whereas Hoopla, we just get access to this big database. And then patrons can choose what they want and we get charged for use.
For Libby, each department has a selector, I select for the youth department.
Which is why sometimes I can only find what I'm looking for on one.
Right.
Or the other, yeah.
And a lot of that has to do with what the publishers agree to provide on each platform. There's, you know, there are the other party to it, right? Whether they're gonna sell the book to Hoopla, whether they're gonna sell it to Libby, whether they're not gonna sell it to either, like Audible exclusive, Amazon owns those, you know, there's a, there's another couple of factors in it, you know. So it may just not even be available.
And then both of them, Libby only has Kindle. And Hoopla doesn't have Kindle format.
Yep.
So if I, uh, when I go online and it says, I, I do audio books, it, it say two copies available, you know, the wait is four weeks. It's cause we purchased on Libby two copies, I'm just waiting for other people to library.
Right, whereas if it was on Hoopla, anybody could use it, it's instantaneous.
It's instant.
But there was a way to, cause I have a book listed and it says, if your library purchases it.
Is that on Overdrive?
Libby.
Or Libby?
Yeah. You'll be notified.
Yeah, there's something called a deep search where you can, you kind of ping your library to, that you're interested in that book.
Right, right. But it's not available, so someday if it is, I guess I'll get a notice.
So it's kind of good because it does ping the library to say, somebody's interested in this. And the library then can decide, if enough people are interested, then we'll buy it. So it's, it's a good system in that respect.
I do that all the time. Yeah. We get a list, you know? I didn't know that, I didn't know the person, I found it, it's like notify, I mean, I didn't know that it was saying like, Laura, Danny wants a.
Just cares how you get it, right?
It's smart of Libby because then we can find more books.
Yeah.
It might be.
It's probably more than one person has to ask, so you know, don't feel like it's just you.
No, it is just you, you're special.
But yours gets else.
Yes.
We also wanted an exclamation point.
With an exclamation point.
It makes our jobs easier. It's hard. Yes.
And last question, is this a duopoly, or is there other services besides those two that we should be looking at?
There are other services, but I think these are the two best services. I don't know the landscape of all the other services at this moment in time, but.
I would, I would say by far Killian, right? None, there's, have been no competitors worth anything in quite some time.
We.
There have been attempts, but nothing has stuck.
Yeah, we work with other libraries as well, we're part of the Metronet Consortium, and that group has looked into other services and switching to other ones that are available. And we come back to Overdrive specifically every time for that group because of how it lets us share materials within that consortium and, um, because it's simply, it's the only one that has Kindle format. Amazon does not work with any of the other ebook vendors specifically to have page to write access or like the, the e-reader access.
And we've made such an investment in it at this point, too. Great, well, it was a long and interactive, rambly report.
I'm done, Hugh.
Yeah.
I just sent you.
I'm done, Hugh.
Yeah.
I just sent you.
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 Part of the regular.
Yeah.
I just sent you.
Just get my.
I just sent you.
Page four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just sent you.
I think you guys are providing a little color on this now.
I just sent you.
I just sent you.
These checks.
I just sent you.
So thank you for the, for the errors.
Yeah.
I only knew if the items I had, the ones to be discussed.
Yeah.
You can go to pay.
Yeah.
You.
Yeah.
Which is a budget, so we're one.
Yeah.
Budget.
Yeah.
You should remember.
Yeah.
Columns four, five, and shows you.
Yeah.
In percent.
Yeah.
But you can see there's some items.
Yeah.
Forty-one percent of our.
Yeah.
Year.
Yeah.
Hundred-two.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep, then.
Yeah.
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 And the periodicists, as I said, they pay.
Yeah.
It's a big amount of money.
Yeah.
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 And that is for most of our subscriptions.
Yeah.
Subscriptions.
Yeah.
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 Subscriptions stay.
Yeah.
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 Especially the.
Yeah.
Especially the.
Yeah.
Stay.
Yeah.
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 Do one other.
Yeah.
Charge.
Yeah.
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 We, we would approve it.
Yeah.
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 Why did we stop getting that Q?
Yeah, it's done. Yeah, it's done. Yeah, it's done.
Cause we have a cinch on something now.
Something else.
Yeah, we got two.
Yeah, we're average.
Alright.
Five, five A.
Five cinch Q.
Five cinch Q. We heard that. Five cinch Q.
What?
Five cinch Q.
What? What for me?
She thought it was important to do the catches for us in the general.
No.
Five cinch Q.
It's hard to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Five cinch Q.
I'm done.
Q.
Yeah, every done.
Five cinch Q.
Q.
Yeah, cool done.
So we got four like consent badges. Yeah, it's done.
Five cinch Q.
So regular.
Five cinch Q.
Yeah, it's done, you know? Yeah, it's done.
Alright.
Because we're not, yeah, it's done.
Five cinch Q. It.
Yeah, it's done.
Five cinch Q.
Sent to general.
Yeah, it's done.
I apologize to you. Okay.
Yeah. Five cinch Q.
You got it.
Five cinch Q.
Yeah.
Five cinch Q.
Yeah.
Five cinch Q.
Yeah.
Five cinch Q.
So.
Five cinch Q.
Remaining.
Five cinch Q.
Yes.
Five cinch Q.
So.
Five cinch Q.
I'll say.
Five cinch Q.
Yeah.
Five cinch Q.
Yeah.
Just two.
Yeah.
And there's great Q.
Yes.
And welcome everyone to the Gondra here.
Five cinch Q.
Yeah.
So what do you guys have to say to them?
Yeah.
Um.
A lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why are you here?
It is.
Uh.
Yeah, we go to U D J with cops, we have a project going on with the local.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Three year.
Yeah.
Where you let, go to meeting, take notes on it, and I don't have a project stuff on it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Just to the class.
Yeah.
It's not, just get an idea of them.
Yeah. Yeah.
But love, love them everywhere.
Don't they find this meeting exciting?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
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 Link's go to the top.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's true.
For that's fine.
Oh, well.
They.
Yes, they have.
And you can find all those um materials we're discussing on our.
Yeah.
Five cinch Q.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sure.
Five cinch Q.
Yeah.
Like.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah.
Apple.
Yeah. 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 And then Jane is here from S S B.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you have any updates? Yeah.
My turn.
Yeah.
Okay. So.
Yeah.
For that.
Yeah.
Are we bringing money for a one hundred and forty dollars?
Yeah.
Inside out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Donate to the. Major support for our management.
Yeah.
Yeah. This month we're having a bottle and can ride.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
And we usually have a graduation celebration.
Yeah.
Survey it all.
Yeah.
No one cares.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
Won't.
Yeah.
This is a great question.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm done.
Yeah.
We're planning to have a.
Yeah.
Open for.
Yeah. Yeah.
We don't have money.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then. Plans are being made for the sketch development.
Yeah. Yeah.
Some of the things we're considering.
Yeah.
Electron.
Yeah.
Organization.
Yeah.
And this.
Yeah.
Home.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
If you want to bring bottles and cans where should we?
Yeah. Yeah.
Stand.
Yeah.
Big.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll have to let you in soon.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks, Jane.
Yeah. Yeah. The members of the public are staff.
Yeah.
Who are there.
Momma's saying.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which I think is kind of. Is anyone getting?
No? Alright, so our first item on the agenda. Yeah. Business is the summer reading showcase. Yeah. And I am glad to work really and believe Western to regain all of you with the wonderful plans that staff have for summer reading. Yeah. Yeah. Do you guys wanna come? Yeah.
Yes, please.
I, I didn't ask if you knew about the presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. You can stand behind. See, we're twins, we both brought the, we both brought the summer reading brochure, so um. Hopefully you know that we do summer reading every year, this isn't like shocking, right? Um, unlike my own father who last night was like, well, why do you have to go to the library for reading? And that's just for kids, and I was like, just for kids, everyone, Dad. Um, so don't be my dad. Um, so, Killian and I are here to talk to you today about kind of a brief overview of what we're doing this summer. You wanna start?
Sure.
Thanks, that's a good idea. Sure. Um, so this year's theme is Color Your World, it's very art focused, there's gonna be a lot of color in the library, we're very excited about it. Um, and so for youth, we really focus on having kids build habits of reading regularly. So we have them log the days that they read, rather than the number of books or the amount of time they spend reading. Because we just want them to get used to reading at least a little bit every single day. So we have them earn badges for every five days that they've read. And then we also have some activities that they can do, uh, that help encourage engagement with things we have going on in these rooms, or uses the library offers. Or just general learning and discovering in the world around. So we create a paper log that they are able to use to keep track of their reading and keep track of their, uh, all of their activities. Because some people like being able to put it up like on the fridge, have their kid colored in, that sort of thing, so we give them that option. But they will have to log on Beanstack to earn their badges and their grand prize drawing ticket and all of that. So with reading logging, every five days they get a badge, they will also get a P C L book. And so the first time they get one, they get a little packet to hold them in all summer. And it also has a little plastic frame that is gonna be their book. They hold on to those all summer, and at the end of the summer, they can use those in our Rainbow Reader Market to buy different prizes that we have available. And then for every logging badge and active badge, they get a My Prize Drawing Ticket that will let them enter to win some prize drawings, things like. A diamond painting kit, a toyology toys gift card. A family game pack, Squishmallows and Squishables. We've got a bunch of different things, that's just a few of them. Um, I've been putting them into Beanstack as old as children's. Uh. Person, so I've been doing that lately. Um, and.
Yeah.
So they can enter to win all of those. And it takes ten badges to be considered completing the program. Um. Because of the, the number of badges that has to be at least. Are they reading badges? But they can get ten reading badges and not do any activity, it's all very customizable. And that's what makes it work for. I remember up to your eighth grade. And then we have a lot of programs and stuff going on. So we have animals coming into the library.
Come on, where is that?
There's so many, there's like a few different. Squirrels, reptiles, yeah.
Go.
How will nature center folks are coming to us?
Well, there's squirrels in the library.
Are there any goats?
Hopefully not this year.
That's tame, only tamed, that's awesome. Only tamed for pups.
They were not.
We'll also be doing our video game guide again, that's gonna be a um collaborative program with myself and. Um, Maya from Adult Teen Services, so we can get uh people of colleges in using those systems that the friends helped us uh get our hands on. And that we've been doing a lot of really great programming with, so there's a lot of things going on, I'm gonna go ahead and pass that around. Um, we like to make the distinction between summer reading program and summer reading challenge, a lot of what Killian was talking about would pertain to the challenge, right? The reading portion of summer reading. Um, but you know, the whole summer reading program encompasses everything from the kickoff, which you will of course experience because we played it on a board meeting night, yes, always, yay! June seventeenth, I have two of the three foot trucks about already, we have the Little Donut Company and Takeria Flores coming. So I'm working on the third one, um, so that'll be, you know, super fun, um, you know, kickoff, registration table, craft games, all the excitement. Um, yes, we're doing the shuttle again, so that will be an option for folks, you too can ride it um to the meeting if you want.
What time does it start?
But we don't want.
Five o'clock. Five o'clock to eight o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Yeah.
And how late will the shuttle be running?
Uh, until there are not any people left to take over.
Okay.
Because I do not wish to drive them back in my car, hopefully it'll be done by eight, cause we say the event does seven thirty till seven thirty.
Right.
Um, wrap up, you know, we're doing a glow party this year, it ends August eighth, so it's June seventeenth through August eighth is the full range of the challenge. We're doing a big glow party, which I'm really excited about. Um, the message, I think other people have the same idea, cause messages were going on.
I know, I saw that too.
Can we borrow another lover's black lights? And I was like, are lovers holding secret raves that they don't know about?
Right, right.
Sounds amazing.
I'm so sad I won't be there.
I know, um, we will also have cone of shape ice at the wrap up party, so as a fun summer, summer treat. Um, Adult and Teen works a lot, you know, like youth, just a little simpler, you read a book, you get an entry, you enter four gift cards. Um, you know, we do Schuler books, um, a lot of those, just because they're our local independent bookstore. Um, again, lots of other programs, uh, a little twist this year, the friend gave us money to buy brand new books to give to teens when they register. So, you know, thirteen to eighteen, they come in and, and register, you get a free brand new book to take home with you just for signing up for, for summer reading. Um, they also get extra badges by reading this or any book in the Inheritance Game series. Um, my Libby copy just came in, so I myself will be reading it, and it's supposed to be real good. Um, to do that, um, and lots of really great craft programs and fun stuff this year, I think we really have a, a good selection, it was an easy theme, you know, some of them are real. Real hard to work with, and Color Our World is just a fabulous one.
I thought I saw um yard signs.
Mm-hmm. Yes, we like. The patrol. We're doing the prize patrol once again, um, you know, kind of coordinated through admin, of course, but you know, that'll be another component, so you'll start seeing those yard signs come out again. For people who love their libraries, same designs as before, the really cool um patron generated.
Yes.
Library, library card images, so.
Great. And the friends paid for all staff to get summer reading T-shirts, so I'll be.
Yes. Uh, I'll be representing. Um, so they're really cool, this year, we can show you where we got them if you, if you would like ones to.
Uh, the brochures are, are they gonna be mailed?
They're gonna be out, we can, you have like what, like two thousand?
We have so many of them.
Enough of them for school visits. We just started going on our school visits to promote summer reading, um, so we had a few last week, I'm going one on, on one at the end of this week, we take.
Okay.
Flyers for every kid that we're speaking to, as well as book lists for the grade that's uh we're speaking to. Yep, and those will be in the library, um, and all, of course, all of it's on our website, you know, we do a very.
This one won't be mailed.
This summer newsletter, um, I think is going out right now, right?
It won't be mailed.
Yeah, like the, under last week, I think.
Which will contain all this information, but this is just like.
But this is really.
On just summer reading.
The challenge and programs during that.
Because we have so many families saying, well, what is just summer reading, you know, like, and we're like, huh, all summer reading. And it's pretty, and you can have bigger type and have actual pictures and fun stuff.
So we could pick those up and.
You sure?
Yes.
Absolutely, please do. We have so many.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Killian or Nora?
This is all just for library card holders, okay.
The youth program is a little more flexible, just uh because we have, we go into the schools and these schools are so.
Yes.
It's hard to explain to like a six year old, I'm sorry, you can do summer reading, you just let them do.
Gonna get the shirker.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay, gotcha.
And we're little, little ones. We want them to read.
Yes.
Reading is good.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you both so much.
Cool. And you know where to find us if you, you think of other questions.
Yeah.
Easy. Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can stay or go, whatever you decide.
Cool.
Alright.
I need to see all the animals.
Mm-hmm.
Let me keep going? Alright. Uh, we are on to item number B, which is to consider an expenditure for. Um, staff computers, this is on page twenty-nine, there is a memo. So let me uh go through this. Um, so as you know, we have a purchasing guideline, and it says that anything over twenty-five thousand dollars, we should be doing an R F P process for. Uh, but there are exceptions to that rule, but the board has to approve the expenditure without the R F P process. And this is one of those times. So um, I'm asking you to consider this purchase of uh staff computers for just over ninety-six thousand dollars. As you know from this memo, uh, our staff computers are getting a little bit on the old side, many are between six and eight years old. Catherine was saying screws are falling out of her computer, and I hear a lot of complaints about slow processing time, so it's time for us to update these computers. Um, these machines are all running Windows ten, which will no longer be supported after October of this year, so we need to upgrade in order to get Windows eleven. Um, and I T has set the goal of replacing all of these computers before the end of October, when that, um, I don't know, I guess Windows ten turns into a pumpkin or something. Um, I T is working with the library network, which is the consortia to which we belong, and we get a lot of things, um, and discounted rate through I T, and technology is one of the big ones. So um, T L N has negotiated the best possible price for the Dell equipment that we are accustomed to. Um, and I T has made a couple of additional upgrades, including an additional display support, so we can have dual monitor workstations, which many of us enjoy. Um, we've upgraded from eight gigs to sixteen gigs of RAM, and we've added an additional terabyte of additional storage for shared use machines. Which are those machines that we use at our public service desks, many people sign into those machines. Um, we're basically doing a one-to-one swap, so like if you have a laptop, you will get a new laptop, if you have a desktop, you will get a new desktop. Um, we didn't, we didn't give people a lot of choices, we just said you're getting a new computer. Um, there is, and I T is ordering a couple of extra monitors and extra laptops, just in case um we need them for a program maybe, or you know, if something bad happens to somebody's equipment. Um, you can see this is itemized here in the memo, seventy-eight desktop computers, ten monitors, ten docs, and forty-eight Dell laptops. Is the um list of items that we're purchasing, and that comes to ninety-six thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-one cents. Um, in order to try to keep as many of these pieces of equipment out of a landfill, we have some ways that we're gonna try to um reuse some equipment. Um, so old desktops will be kept as backups, or we might use them as end-of-range catalog computers, which are the machines that are throughout the stacks that people use to look up books on the um catalog. Um, or we'll sell them at the next used equipment sale, which we don't have on the books right now, but we'll have to get one because the tech graveyard will be full after this. Um, any laptops that are still in good condition, we'll keep around as spares, and then anything older than five years, we're just gonna put for sale in the used equipment sale.
Where do you store all this before the sale?
There's a, a room downstairs in the basement, behind the elevator.
Okay. Oh, gotcha.
Yeah. Um, as I said, we're purchasing this equipment through T L N, which is providing cooperative purchasing. You may remember when we purchased those servers last year or so, we ordered those through a contract called Midwestern Higher Education Compact. And T L N is using that same compact to get a discounted rate on this equipment here. Um, so that is my presentation to you, um, I'm happy to answer any questions. I asked Paul, Department Head of I T, to come tonight, just in case there's something that I can't ask or answer, excuse me. Um, and yeah, I'm happy to take your questions, and if you support this, then there is a motion on page thirty.
They'll all come in in one fell swoop, so all seventy-eight and all forty-eight and all, okay.
It's a hundred and twenty-six total.
Okay. And then to switch the information from the old to the new, how long does that process take?
Um, that's probably, uh, it's gonna depend, but it'll take a couple months, probably.
But it's individual, so each person has to have it done differently, or they'll have different things.
Yeah, each computer has different programs that run on them, so have to coordinate with you, with each department, and uh each staff member kind of depends on what they, what they do and what their role is.
And then if you deem one of the computers will not be used in the library and you're gonna put it in that sale, do you just wipe it clean of everything?
We take the hard drive out.
Okay.
So there's nothing there, and then we sell it without the hard drive.
Oh. Oh, gotcha, okay.
Yep.
And Shane, you had asked why we do it all in one fell swoop and don't stagger it. Um, it's just easier, it keeps everything consistent, then everybody's getting the same update at the same time. Um, because it's consistent for warranty, pricing.
Yep, and uh, it's all the same model, um, of computer.
How many employees do we have?
About a hundred.
So why are we getting a hundred and thirty laptops?
Uh.
Some of them have two, you have two in your office, don't?
Well, we're getting forty-eight laptops.
Hundred and forty-eight computers.
Uh, because, yeah, there's two at some stations, it's not just employees, it's also the public service desks.
Oh, these are customer facing.
Not customer spacing, but for employees to use at the public service desk, so at the reference desk, computer desk, the welcome desk.
Then when were the, when were the ones that the public can use requests?
Um, when were?
So that's not part of this project, because we're waiting on the spaces, uh, to sort of determine what the need is and what the space is gonna look like for the, the public computers.
When did we buy anyone's last?
For the public? Um, that actually, I don't know, offhand.
I can't remember.
It's been a while, um, but that, that is on the list for sure.
I, I definitely think we need to get away from Windows ten. I mean, I, I spoke to you, Paul, or I spoke to someone on your staff. Because there's some change now, I think PowerPoint's going away, but you can use Word like PowerPoint or something, but it's only with Windows eleven. I think we're, if there's going to be any training or more training, it has to be on Windows eleven. Because most of us have left ten a long time ago.
And it won't be supported any longer.
Right.
Right.
Is this the first time that we're hearing about this, or was this?
This is the first time.
Oh, it is?
I mean, it was part of the C I P.
No, that's, that's what I thought, okay, that's what I thought, because I remember. Talking about this a little bit and saying, so this isn't a shock?
Yeah. Correct.
Okay.
No, it was a line item in the C I P.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay. Yeah. Okay.
May I move?
Please.
Yeah. I move to approve the purchase of computer equipment from the library network for the total price of ninety-six thousand two hundred and sixty-three. Hundred and eighty-one cents.
Three dollars.
Second.
Dollars.
Thank you.
Dollars.
All in favor?
I second it, and then I.
Uh, motion. I think there was a, didn't you second it?
I seconded.
Oh, you did, I'm so sorry, I retract my second.
Thank you. So Joy make the motion and Joan second it.
It was so quiet.
We're gonna have a third this time, that's fine.
Okay, you did.
Third everything if you want.
Okay. Dare to dream.
Alright, thank you so much for that, we will enjoy our new computers.
And when can, when can you expect them? Like how long?
Oh, lead time?
Yeah.
Uh, that's a, I don't know offhand, um, but it's been pretty good, so I expect, we just ordered a, a server, um, and they came in within seven days. So probably won't be that quick, but I suspect uh when we order it, uh, within the month, is my guess.
Another reason to order now is to avoid any tariffs.
Yes, that's what I was, I was wondering about, okay.
Yeah.
Great.
We've been lucky so far, it doesn't seem like it has affected this yet, but we want to order it very soon.
Yeah, sure.
Alright, thank you.
We'll go, go, just.
Yeah, go order it right.
Going now.
Going now.
So bye, bye now.
We're gonna order it.
Alright, thanks, well, Paul, you can. Alright, well, we're on to C, item C, agreements with partner libraries. Um, okay, well, this library for a very long time has had three partner agreements with these institutions that are not part of the library network. Or part of any other consortium, um, that would allow for any reciprocal borrowing with, for our patrons. They are Cranbrook Educational Community, Detroit Public Library, and Troy Public Library. It is weird that Troy Public Library is not part of T L N, but it is not, it is part of Suburban Library Cooperative. And if uh we didn't have this agreement, our patrons would not be able to check items out from the Troy Public Library. Um, we had the Detroit Public Library Agreement, um, for a really long time, actually. Uh, Lyndon and I were researching this as far back as we could go, and we really couldn't find the origin of it. But I know that in the early two thousands, the state of Michigan pulled funding from the city of Detroit's library. And that it no longer was a statewide resource, it used to be that anybody in the state of Michigan could get a card from D P L and use it. When the state pulled that funding, they became a city library, and you had to pay for a library card. Um, so we had this special agreement with them that allowed our patrons to use their library and their patrons to use our library. Additionally, D P L has some really amazing historical collections that we would not find anywhere else. And they were charging admission for those as well, and this agreement um allowed our patrons to bypass that, and we have some very keen historical society members who use those collections regularly. Um, so these contracts are all on a three-year term, the last time we did this work was twenty-twenty-two, so it's time to renew all of them. They have different um start dates, I think June, July, and August first for up, for, um, for them. Um, as you can see from the statistics included in the memo, there is quite a bit of usage of these items, especially as you pointed out, the Cranbrook passes. Um, our patrons really like using the Troy Public Library, especially the folks who live on the east side. And when um we reached out to the director there, she said there's quite a few of our patrons that frequent Troy Public Library. Um, so Troy and.
And you can get video games from there.
Yeah, yeah. Troy and Cranbrook said that they would uh be happy to renew for another three years. Um, but Detroit Public Library declined this year, it's kind of an end of an era. Um, they cited that they are moving to using the My Library Card Program, and they want to standardize their reciprocal borrowing through that program. Um, you might wonder, what is My Library Program, Tara? Um, it is a, a, like a loose affiliation of libraries around the state that opt in and say that they will honor this special library card. Um, and it's, it's just that, you just say, I want to be part of this program, and then you're part of the program, and you get, I think there's a special card that your patrons get. And then we would honor that from any patron around the state that's participating this, in this, and our patrons could go anywhere. We have declined to be part of this program as we want to prioritize our residents and our service, and so we have not been a, a partner of this program for some, for, ever since its inception. Um, so while it's disappointing, and as I said, you know, the end of an era for D P L to not renew, I understand where they're coming from. You know, libraries have finite resources, and they gotta prioritize their own residents. Um, additionally, they mentioned that those, those great historical collections, their special collections are now free and available to anyone without a library card, and there is no charge. So our patrons would still be able to benefit from those wonderful collections. Um, and we will work on some kind of communication, some way to try to connect with the people who have library cards and let them know that this um is ending. Um. I think, so can I ask, you know, it's a, we'll honor, D P L will honor until expiration. Yeah, so they, when they issue a library card to one of our patrons, it's good for two years, so they'll honor those until the expiration date comes, so.
Shh, 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 okay.
If somebody got one, yeah, earlier this month, they would have it for two years.
Okay.
And we said we would do the same.
Okay, but we don't know what happens then if they opt.
Well, then when that person went back to the library, they wouldn't be able to borrow books from D P L.
Yeah. So that more or less ends it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But do we still have a few weeks to get that card? Or did it end as of tonight, because we're talking about it?
Um, you know what, I can't remember when that one expired.
You go down there and try.
I love us.
I can.
Going to be, I'll be in Detroit tomorrow.
Hmm, well, there you go.
I can find out, I can't remember off the top of my head when that would expire.
That's alright, I will go in the library tomorrow and just put my glycerin tears on.
Yeah, that's not fair, you can't talk your way through it.
It's true, that's true.
With them often.
You have the date there of April first, twenty twenty-four to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, I don't know if that's.
That was just the.
Aligned with the contract?
No, that was the fiscal year, and we just used that to pull those statistics.
That's right, I will let you know when I go tomorrow.
If you get arrested.
So there are copies of the agreements, um, they are signed by um Emily Dumas, the Director of Troy Public Library, and. Um, Jeff Bolton, the CFO of Cranbrook. And they're just waiting for Shane's signature, we have copies here, but there is a, a motion, um, you will have to approve these, make a motion to approve these contracts. If you so choose.
The Detroit is August first.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I thought that one was the later one.
Thank you.
Okay, so I can go down and report. So may I move, please?
Yeah.
I move that Bloomfield Township Public Library renewed the agreements with the Cranbrook Educational Community. And Troy Public Library for a three-year term as stated in the agreements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Great, thank you, we have agreements for three more years. And we will do some work to, we need to get some updated Cranbrook passes, and we need to do some communicating as we can with um D P L folks. And that's the end of our, your business.
Sarah, did you want to go through the strategic plan materials, or are we good?
Um, no, that's, that's just there for you.
So thirteen and fourteen, not applicable, fifteen is other, anybody have any other?
I don't have any other other.
Um, I just wanted to say I love, well, and I'll tell Catherine directly, I love the free section.
The free section.
Um, at the end, it was all the things that were free for families and.
Oh.
Uh, it's being a library card.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Events and.
Yep.
I think that was new.
Well, that.
Was it?
That's part of the press mentions section, so we were included in some. Well, I don't even know where this came from, actually. Metro Detroit, no. Top free library events in Metro Detroit.
It's usually in San G.
I think it was in San G. I think I saw there.
Well, anyway, I thought it was good to put that in there.
Um Little Guide, that's what it's called. I don't know what that is, but that's where that came from.
Oh, I think it's Metro Detroit has a little guide.
I'm curious about whether we have received applications for the Meyer Scholarship. Not yet. So that's still out there.
The deadline's June first, so there's a couple of weeks.
June first, okay.
If you know anybody.
Great, thank you.
I have one little other. Um I was getting increasingly annoyed at the load time of the app. So I reached out to this gentleman and I noticed that it is improved, so thank you.
Has it? Okay, yeah, for sure, for sure.
Well, I don't know what you guys did, but.
Well, we reached out to the um company that we work with, Innovative, um and they said they would look into it.
Okay. Good. Okay.
And they came back and said it was looking fine. It could, it could have just been load time at that specific time.
Okay, cause it seems to be okay now, so, yeah.
Um but. That's good. That's really good. Yeah, I was gonna ask you.
Yeah, there were times when you, I I tried, cause I use the app all the time. I prefer that. And so you're waiting and you're waiting. And sometimes I just, you know, aborted that load and then just tried it again and that kind of, so it does seem to be better. So maybe they did do something.
Yeah, they might have restarted something, uh which they often do and, you know, it improves things for sure.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
I have found that too. I get frustrated that it doesn't load and so I'll, I'll kill the app and start again. Sometimes reboot my phone and that sometimes helps too.
Yeah, right. Thanks. What's the qualification for the scholarship again?
You have to have a relationship with the library, which we define as you could be a patron, have a library card, work here, be the um related to somebody who works here. And then there's an essay component and you have to um, you know, prove that you're admitted into some higher education institution in the fall. Application of the fall.
I do have uh one more question, Tara. I'm sorry, I've been hogging the passer on folder. Someone wrote, uh they say they live in Escanaba. Does the library have S and P net advantage database? But I, I couldn't find an answer either online.
No, um Laura did reply to them and encouraged them to reach out to some other institutions
Oh, yeah.
because our license agreement with S and P dictates that we can't let other people besides our service area use that.
Okay, okay.
I encouraged a, a college or university, um particularly considering their location in the state.
That's not a typical database.
It's very rare that a public library would have that, you know, um so I would think maybe a university in their area might, but. I didn't get a response, but I said, please let me know if you have other questions.
Yeah, and I thought that the requister had said they looked in their area.
Yeah, but a lot of people think public, they don't think of all the kinds of libraries. They don't think of a university.
Okay, thank you, cause I was looking for the answer and I.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Any other others? No other other. It's cold, cold.
I'll take a divorce to a turn.
So.
Second.
All right. Aye.
All right.